Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Beacon Board of Education. Please rise for the president.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mrs. Antleke Everett.
Here.
Mrs. Gadston.
Here.
Mrs. Galbaum.
Here.
Mr. Garnett.
Here.
Mr. Munoz.
Excused.
Ms. Patchen.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Zoff.
Here.
Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Do you like to review the fire exits?
Fire exits are on either side of the cafeteria.
May I have a motion for executive session? Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual, and the board will return as soon as possible. Comments or questions? All those in favor, uh, proposed? Motion carried. The board will return shortly.
Okay, um, first, we have two presentations, but at first we'd like to bring forward, um, Mrs. Stigney. Is she here? Yes, there she is. Who has a presentation for some of our music students.
Superintendent Quinroni, board members and fellow trustees. Tonight, I'd like to present to you four respected and talented, high-achieving young musicians who attended the Dutchess County Junior High All-County Festival this past January. Our students were selected to participate based on an audition to measure their musical abilities and teacher recommendation of academic and personal character. These select elite students from thirteen public school districts and eight private schools in Dutchess County learned their music on their time after school and joined together for eleven hours of rehearsal over two days and a concert on January 30th. Students who excel and achieve in music performance have often have other cognitive strengths in language and spatial development. They understand multi-step problem-solving, management, self-efficacy, and they see the beauty and joy in the world. Please join me in celebrating and acknowledging these young men and women in their achievements. And I'd like to present awards for Elizabeth Senacola, Anna Senacola, Alexandra Julian, and Madeline Correles. Not with us this evening, business Anya Gun as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stigney. Um, next. Speak louder, right, or speak into the mic? Um, I'd like to ask Ron Mackey, who's going to do his budget presentation on transportation. Yes?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to present this evening. I'm gonna talk about our transportation budget for 2016-17. The first thing I'd like to talk about is where we are. I'd like to discuss the current situation, present some statistics on our fleet, our staffing, and some of the services that we currently provide. Just to give you an idea of the size of our fleet right now, we have a total of sixty-eight vehicles. One that is temporarily out of service, that's TOS, as opposed to POS, which is permanently out of service. Our fleet's roughly the same size as it was last year, just got one vehicle difference. We have thirty-three buses, two of which are large buses equipped to transport students who use wheelchairs. Twenty-five vans, five of which of those are actually equipped with wheelchair lifts and securements, tightouts. And we also have ten cars in the fleet that we use to transport students to various schools. We have a number of schools where we have one student, two students that go, and for those purposes, we use some of these cars. Okay, just to give you an idea of the routes, I'm still getting used to my glasses here. Uh, we do forty-seven routes every day that operate on a multiple-tier system. So those forty-seven routes are covering one-hundred-and-sixty-nine daily trips, plus we have one route that's currently contracted out. Uh, we have thirteen buses that cover our high school and our middle school, twenty-three buses that cover our indistinct elementarys. In addition to that, we have eighteen private parochial schools that we transport to and twenty-five special education locations. So we're transporting to forty-nine different schools, including the six schools here in Beacon. Uh, we are obligated to provide transportation in these circumstances. Uh, for the private schools, we have to provide transportation for students up to a fifteen-mile limit, and for the private, uh, special ed schools, it's a fifty-mile radius. We travel about five-thousand, uh, five thousand miles a day. In the past, I've used the previous graph to show our routes posted on the board, but what I wanted to do today was to give you an idea of the schools that we transport to and where they are located. So you can see here, the first county that we transport to is Sullivan County. We go out to a school out there called Center for Discovery. Some of our students with special needs have to go out that far. We also go to Orange County. We have a number of schools that we transport to in Orange County. Uh, this isn't a comprehensive list, but just to give you an idea, we go to six different counties currently. Ulster County, we have a student that goes to Kingsman High School. Putnam County, we have several schools that would go out there for that are special ed schools, as well as Westchester County, and then Dutchess County. So these are all of the schools, a number of the schools that do not include our six schools here in Beacon, the high school, middle school, and our four elementary schools. That's a huge task for us, just if you, you talk about, we've had nice mild winters, so if you talk about snow days and give-back days, we're probably the only department that operates on forty-six different school calendars. So it's, it's a lot of fun trying to keep track of who's open, who's closed, who's releasing early. The next thing I'd like to talk about is our staffing certificates, staffing statistics, rather. I have fifty-four school bus drivers, nine substitute drivers, thirty bus monitors, three substitute monitors, a supervisor, one dispatcher, two head bus drivers, a part-time typist, a full-time head mechanic, and three full-time mechanics. That's a hundred and four positions total in the department. Um, some of the, uh, the key people in this department include our dispatcher, Sarah Durlin. Most of you know her as now. Uh, head bus driver Linda Lane, and we added another head bus driver last year, Deb Emrich. I wanted just to note an achievement from the department this year. We had a nineteen-day audit where the department of motor vehicles comes in and audits our driver files. And, uh, it was a random audit, they just came in, and all of our files were found to be a hundred percent in compliance. So, that's another little discussion on what that means, but, I don't really kind of get the idea. We also monitor the driving license of all the drivers in the district who drive other vehicles, the maintenance fellows, those kind of things. And I ran a report recently, and of all the drivers that we have, bus drivers and maintenance folks who have eighty-one drivers on the roster, they have a current total of two points on their licenses. So I just thought that was an impressive statistic that I wanted to include. Some of the services that we render. The, uh, we transport students in a safe, efficient, and timely manner. Um, we transport basically our main bread and butter's home-to-school, school-to-home. But we also do a number of other services. Field trips, uh, sports trips. Mr. Nemecek was kind enough to provide me with some slides today, some photos of some of the students. Uh, sports trips, uh, work programs for the Beacon High School, uh, childcare locations, students who go to childcare places in after-school. Uh, the after-school programs, the IRP programs that the elementary schools run. Uh, five oh four medical requests, those students who have medical issues and need transportation for medical reasons. To place students under McKenna Vento, those would be the students who, uh, for one reason or another, are homeless. And then sometimes we also have tutoring or special services. We're not doing any special services currently, but sometimes if you have a student who is from another district, the district of location is responsible for transporting those students to any related services. Now, that's different as opposed to a student who goes out of district for special ed, it would be the district of residence. If we have a student here who's going to one of the private schools here in district, and they're coming to one of our public schools for, um, special services, it's the district of location that would have to do that. Okay, some of the challenges we're facing ahead of us. I put a graph together here, um, because I haven't done graphs in previous presentations, I thought it would be good to practice my graph skills. These are the vehicles we have by year, going back to nineteen ninety-eight. We have one vehicle, that's a nineteen ninety-eight, and you can kind of see the numbers. We have three vehicles that are two thousand and sixteen. So this isn't exactly the year that the vehicles were approved, because back in two thousand and ten, uh, this is a list of vehicles by model year. Our budget did not, our proposition, rather, did not pass in two thousand and ten. And, uh, we did not purchase any vehicles that year. So you'll see that there's four vehicles that are two thousand and ten model years. Some of, two of those were purchased in two thousand and nine. They were next-year models that came off the line, and two of those were purchased in two thousand and eleven. They were previous-year models that we received. I just wanted to point out that in two thousand and five, the cost of a seventy-two-passenger bus was approximately eighty thousand dollars. And the cost that we'll be seeing later on, they're running around a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Uh, these are vehicles by age groups. So if you look at this graph, you'll see that we have five vehicles that are fourteen-plus years older, seven vehicles that are eleven to ten years old, uh, eleven to thirteen years old. So these are, this thing is not working well. These are the ones that I'm mostly concerned about here, these older vehicles, these twelve vehicles, that are somewhere between eleven and fourteen years old. Uh, we're fortunate in Beacon to have a transportation garage that helps us maintain the lifespan of the vehicle, to extend it, because the vehicles being parked inside in the winter really helps us, uh, maintain those vehicles in good condition. We have a good preventive maintenance program, so we get a long life out of the buses that we do have. We do have a number of vehicles that are reaching the end of their useful lifespan, and I put some examples up there. So you can see they're as old as two thousand and two, but some of our vans have some pretty high mileage. You'll see here's a two thousand Ford Ford Corvée, that's French, two thousand and eight miles on there. These vehicles have given us ten to fourteen years of service, and our preventive maintenance program again has provided maximum lifespan for them. Uh, school buses do need to pass a DOT program, DOT inspections. So anything like engine issues, rust issues, um, we have to keep those vehicles in tip-top shape or otherwise they will not pass DOT inspection. So if we don't replace our vehicles, what are some of the effects? Repair costs increase, so we need to increase budgetary codes and staff to recover repairs. The possibility of more road calls, towing time, downtime of vehicles, inconvenience to students and parents, getting kids to and from school, and our DOT rating and the safety of the vehicles drops. So these are some of the issues here. Inability to handle vehicle breakdowns and accidents. Uh, we had... One of our wheelchair vehicles was struck by another vehicle, took it out of service, damaged the, just damaged the entry door to the point where it wouldn't function properly. But we had to have bodywork done on that. Thankfully, there were no injuries or anything. But at the same time, one of our backup wheelchair vans experienced the lift issue, so now we have two wheelchair vans that are having issues. Our DOT rating, we have an excellent DOT rating. In two thousand and ten, eleven, it was ninety-eight point five percent. In eleven and twelve, it was ninety-four point six percent. In two thousand and twelve to thirteen, it was ninety-six point two percent. And in two thousand and thirteen to fourteen, it was ninety-five percent. Basically, what that means is ninety-five percent of our vehicles are passing inspection without any defects. We have different classes of defects, there are A, B, and C defects. An A defect will put the vehicle out of service, but things like, you know, if the bus is dirty, that could be considered a defect, so that could be listed on our DOT report. So we work really hard in trying to keep the buses clean so that we don't have these unexpected defects. The problem is, as the vehicles age, it can affect our DOT rating. And as a DOT rating fluctuates, so do the responsibilities associated with that. The, uh, the U.S. State DOT Bus Inspection Program grades you on how well you do with your bus inspections. So one of the things that we want to do is have a good DOT rate. Now, they're coming out with a new program where they're only gonna, they're gonna, um, change the way that they inspect vehicles. They're gonna do more thorough inspections on those carriers who have lower DOT ratings and those carriers who have proven high DOT ratings, like we consistently do. They're going to change and inspect things somewhat different. By the way, that's not one of our buses being towed. Other effects that happen if we don't keep the vehicles up to snuff. Inability to cover afternoon trip requests. Uh, the principals will tell you they want to do a trip. I always say, "You gotta be back by one-thirty," uh, because we need that bus to get the kids home in the afternoon. So, you know, someone may be planning a trip somewhere, and then all of a sudden we have six or seven buses that go out of service for something, and then we have to, well, can we cover that trip? How do we do that? So we have to do some of these things. Longer bus runs, doubling up routes, uh, buses being at capacity, um, notably at the elementary routes. A few years ago, I came when I presented, I brought in the yardstick, and I talked about the length of the seats that we use, that DOT uses to determine capacity. And I believe it was thirteen inches for each child and fifteen inches for each adult. I didn't have any volunteers that wanted to be measured that evening, um, but that's what they're talking about with capacity. So if you talk about a bus being at a hundred percent capacity, that's three students to a seat, every seat. And by the way, DOT also rates children, high school students at a hundred and twenty pounds per person and drivers at a hundred and fifty pounds a person. Spare vehicles. I put "spare" in quotations because when we talk about the word "spare", we need to kind of really understand what that means. Um, spare buses are needed not only for unscheduled breakdowns and repairs, but for scheduled maintenance and inspections. Uh, when we take a bus out to be inspected by DOT, we go through it with a fine-tooth comb and make sure everything is in tip-top shape. So we want to take that bus off the road, do a thorough inspection, so we don't have any issues with the bus. Um, other issues that we have, uh, we get changes sometimes in the middle of the year in terms of students needing to change schools, whether it was a special ed student that's now, they've identified a different need for that student. Sports trips and field trips. Um, we covered, I think we had close to three hundred sports trips, two hundred and seventy-seven sports trips last year. So if you divide that by a one-hundred-and-eighty-day school year, and knowing that we don't have trips every day, there's times when we have three or four buses going out on sports events in an afternoon. So we need to have these spares to cover those trips. We talk about replacement of buses versus growing the fleet, and I like to kind of equate that to what's happening in terms of the district, in terms of growth and bus capacity. Uh, we've identified a few developments in the area. This is, uh, the Fishkill Grove, Fishkill Woods, development, that's still in development. This is, uh, Sylvan Loop, which is down off Brockway and Springway. So we have some, some developments, some condo complexes that are going in that aren't fully developed yet. So we're trying to plan for how many riders we anticipate coming out of those developments. There's also some additional apartments, uh, when I'm in my spare time, I like to check what's going on in the city of Beacon, and I've been trying to look at their planning websites and see that they have some, uh, housing complexes on the board on the, uh, the docket that they're looking at. So I try to keep up with those things. So what do we need? To talk first about some of the vehicle needs. Uh, we're looking at, um, getting two school vans, one of which is gonna be included in the proposition. And I tried to be as close to the actual dollar amount, I rounded up. I didn't think it would make sense to put cents in there. So the school vans, we have, uh, forty-six thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars is the price of a new school van here, you see this school van. And then we looked at, um, two different style buses. Uh, we've been running ICs or internationals for the most part. Uh, this type of bus over here versus the Bluebirds. Uh, Beacon ran Bluebirds for a long time, and now we're looking at possibly going back to looking at some Bluebirds. We did purchase one Bluebird last year. So we're looking at getting some different vehicles in our fleet to see how they perform in the future so we can make some comparisons. So we're looking at, right now, getting in the proposition, a school van, two Bluebird buses, and one international. So the Bluebirds are at a hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and seventy-three, so for a total, two twenty-two, seven forty-six for that. And the IC bus actually is including, um, a, what's called a PocketMax diagnostic tool, where the mechanics can plug that into the, uh, computer port, and it'll have diagnosed engine issues and performance issues with the buses, so they're gonna, that's included in that quote for one fifteen, four twenty-five. So the proposition we're looking at is three eighty-four, four eighty-three. If you want to read it backwards, it's three eighty-four, four eighty-three. Some other, uh, operational expenses we looked at. Tolls, uh, I put the graphic before, they show the number of schools that we're going to. And we looked, uh, at the number of tolls that we're paying on a daily basis and what that equates to on a monthly basis. So we were averaging around, somewhere around eight hundred dollars a month in tolls. That figure's kind of broken down into daily school to, uh, school-to-home, home-to-school tolls and trip tolls. So we're spending a little over six hundred and seventy dollars a month just getting kids back and forth to school in tolls. Um, some of our, um, training, travel training money that we're looking at, we're looking to add a thousand dollars in that. I have some, uh, staff that need to have some additional training that we're looking to do that. And we looked at our oil figures. Now, you may say the price of oil is down, which it is. Uh, but one of the things we've been able to do in the past is to get credit on our waste oil. With the price of oil being so cheap, nobody wants the waste oil anymore, so we're actually having to pay people to take it away. We have contractors, so, um, these are some of the increased costs. So there's really not looking at a lot operationally in terms of, uh, costs. I wanted to identify some needs going down the road, um, long-term. Generators for our bus depots. Uh, we are fortunate to have that bus garage, you see, oops, oops. The bus garage in the back, but you'll notice the number of doors in that bus garage. We have five in the front and five in the back. That's ten bus doors that we use, that I have open and close repeatedly every day. And we also have another six doors on our maintenance facility. So that's sixteen garage doors that we open and close. If we have a power outage when the kids are in school, I'll be calling people to help me lift those doors up and down, um, because they're pretty big. So you don't have a backup system right now for emergency electrical. So that's one of the things I want to look at doing, is getting generators to do that. Now, the other thing that generators will help us with is our communications, running our phones, running our radios, and keeping our computers running. Uh, we do have contingency plans in place. Um, actually, we accomplished something major this summer. We got the bus floors waxed. I'd like to thank Mr. Savelli for that. But we don't take off in the summer, we work straight through, so we had to come over to the Rondout Library. So we brought our radios and our computers over, and we worked at the library that day. We did have schools going out that day, uh, extended school year programs. So we are able to pick up and run and operate from anywhere in the district if we have to. We do back up our data for our, um, transportation software every night, and I also back it up on a monthly basis so that if something happens to the backup, at least we have a monthly backup. The other, um, additional need that we're talking about is our underground storage tank. When I say PBS, people know what PBS means, right? Petroleum bulk storage, okay? That's regulated by the nice folks down at the DEC. Okay, so one of the things that we did in two, uh, two thousand and twelve, we replaced our underground gasoline tank. Uh, we have two, um, two fuel tanks, one for gasoline, one for diesel at the bus garage, and they were both underground at one point. Um, what happens is that, um, as the tanks age, you get variances in readings. It's kind of technical, but they're only supposed to last for so long. If you start getting variations in your readings, DEC can come in and say, "You need to fix this," or "We're gonna find you." And some of those fines can be significant. So we want to get ahead of the ball on this and look at what we need to do down the line in terms of replacing our underground diesel tank. Our gas tank was a thousand, uh, a thousand-gallon gas tank. Our diesel tank is a five-thousand-gallon gas tank, uh, five-thousand-gallon diesel tank. And right now, we are in compliance with that. We just want to look at, you know, ahead, because it is an expensive proposition to pull that tank out of the ground and replace it with an above-ground tank. The benefits of the above-ground storage is that the regulations are not quite as difficult to deal with. When you have underground tanks, you have to do reconciliations of records and all kinds of things to make sure that there's no leaks in the tank. So these are things that are going on, that we're looking at down the road. I would like to take a minute just to remind people of an important deadline coming up, April first, two thousand and sixteen. That is the deadline for transportation requests to non-public schools. And it's also the deadline for alternate site or daycare, childcare transportation for the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen school year. That deadline is given to us by the state. It's not a district-composed deadline. It's something that every school district tries very diligently to enforce. And the reason is that if we have everything that we need by that April first deadline, we can very conveniently and very efficiently get everything together. We start working on our September runs in June before the next school year ends. And what we start doing is rolling over our databases, checking accuracy of records, planning and replanning bus routes, looking at, uh, which equipment we need to have on which routes. One of the challenging things that we do every year is look at... One of the challenging things that we do every year is look at daycare sites. We are very, very concerned that students get to where they need to be at the end of the day. And when we meet this April 1st deadline, it gives us all the information that we need to have that. So we can put all that into our system, we can create, we can tweak our routes, we can get the letters out to the parents, we can get the routes set up for the drivers, we can let our schools know which buses to put the children on at the end of the day. This is a very important deadline. Just to give you some numbers, last year, on July 21st, which was three months past the deadline, we had 10 children signed up for daycare. We average about 270 children in daycare. Now, the capacity of this room is 255 people. So as you can imagine, we want this information so we can safely and effectively plan for this. On August 3rd, we had 124 forms that were in. So we're still down about 150 forms. This is four months past the deadline. So as we get closer and closer to September, we're tweaking our routes, getting everything together, and there comes a point where zero hour happens, this is what we have, we send the schools the information, the letters go out to the parents, the drivers, routes are set up, they go out, they practice their runs. Anything that comes in after that deadline, we have to let the parents know, we have to let the schools know, the schools have to let the teachers know, we have to let the daycares know, we have to let the drivers know. So there's a lot of things, loose ends, that have to be tied up. So that's why we have this April 1st deadline. It's really, really important, and it helps us keep your children safe. I think I kind of explained that, right?
Yes.
Very passionately.
Very passionately.
Please get the phone, sir.
Please.
Okay. So just show a little, brief little clip here. Oh, maybe not. Working with multiple devices here. We're just going to leave it there, the video's not going to play.
There it goes.
Thank you.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for Ron? Do you want to strike a question?
I just wanted to know, are all the buses equipped with cameras, or are you select new buses that are chosen to have cameras based on the school that they go to?
That's a very good question, one we get asked a lot. Most of the new buses that we have have cameras on them. The cameras we're using now are digital cameras, they come with digital hard drives in them. The older buses may not have cameras on them, but I would say pretty much anything we've purchased in the last five years, with exclusion of some of the cars that we bought from the dealerships on OGS or the Office of General Services, so everything new that we have we're ordering with cameras in.
And is it specific to those buses, those specific schools, like, are you sending to high school, or are they just kind of mixed throughout the district?
Well, that's a secret we don't want the students to know. No, no, we put those buses where we need to have them. Sometimes we move buses around. If a driver is having particularly issues with a student on the bus, we do have the ability to move the buses around. I would like to just thank the principals here in Beacon, in our public schools, they've done a really great job of responding to the bus referrals this year, so I'm really happy about that. It means the world to a driver when, you know, they see that the principals are addressing the behavior issues on the bus. So I would be remiss if I didn't bring that up, guys. Thank you.
And then, safety belt usage on buses, is that across the district, or are all the buses equipped with seat belts, or is it...
All school buses in New York State have been required to have seat belts since 1987.
Are there monitors on the bus, or are all the buses equipped with monitors?
No, not all the buses are equipped with monitors. We do have a number of monitors that work with us here in Beacon, but the only time when a monitor is legally required on the bus is when it's listed in the student's IEP. So we tell our monitors when we hire them that, you know, "Don't get too comfortable on the bus you're on, because if so-and-so calls out sick, we might have to move you." We do get very comfortable with, my drivers get very comfortable having monitors on the buses, my parents get comfortable with having it, the principals get comfortable with having it, but we're not required to have them on every bus, but we do have a number of monitors, and they aren't very good at what they do.
And then my last question was, do you track the number of breakdowns on the buses throughout the course of the year? Do you tell me? I'm sure you do.
Actually, to be quite honest, that's something I'm looking at doing right now. I'm working with my dispatcher mechanic to develop a form to do that. You know, we track all of the accidents, in terms of if a bus breaks down, we make a note of it in our daily log, but, you know, I don't have like a running tally of it. But that is something that I'll be working on as soon as I'm done doing the presentation this evening. If you open up my Google, what's the new thing you're using here in Google?
Google Docs.
The Google Docs, the Google Keep, is one of my notations in Google Keep to get that done.
And then the four buses, I guess you remove some of the buses, like the 11, 14-year-old buses, you remove those out of the fleet? Or you, because they're still in good standing, and we haven't reached, I guess, the life expectancy, they would stay in the fleet? How would it work?
Well, a lot of that will depend on how the proposition goes.
I want four, right?
We're talking about, yes, three big buses in the van. So we would love to take some buses out of service. Okay, thank you.
So my first question was, what's the difference between a head bus driver and a bus driver?
What's the difference between a head bus driver and a bus driver? Head bus drivers are responsible, and again, I don't have my civil service job descriptions in front of me, but the head bus driver is mostly more of a supervisory position. The head bus driver, I actually have two head bus drivers. The one really helps in terms of assigning trips and helping in the dispatch office. The other head bus driver that we created last year is primarily involved in the DMV 19A regulation compliance and the State Education Department compliance, and the trainings and those types of things.
Thank you. My next, it's really more of a comment or asking you to explain something. I think people who have been involved in the budget process for years understand what a proposition is and what it means for buses and the benefit, as opposed to putting those bus purchases in the regular budget. And I'm wondering if maybe you could, or someone could explain just to people who aren't familiar with it.
I'll defer to Amber.
Okay. So we put two propositions up in May. Proposition one is for the budget, proposition two has been for buses. If we were to add the bus, well, actually, I don't think right now we could actually add all of those buses to the budget without making significant cuts, because we have a tax cap. So the proposition allows us to ask the voters if that is what they want to move forward with about getting buses, and we also finance the proposition. So the amount that Ron had mentioned is the total amount that would be financed, but over, we finance it over a five-year period to match the state aid, so we'd only be increasing the levy by roughly $77,000 a year. So it gives us an avenue to get the buses, which are rather expensive, which we need. The slide that Ron showed about the vehicles and their age and, you know, is a clear indication that we have to just keep doing this every year, otherwise we're going to end up with a very dated fleet, which will increase repair costs, and that will have a significant impact on the general fund budget.
Can we just talk about the state aid and all that?
Excuse me, yes, we get transportation aid on all of the codes that are in transportation. So the state aid comes in based upon the expenditures, the buses are aided over five years. So what we do is we finance the buses over five years to match the state aid, so the state aid would come in and kind of offset the amount we paid out.
So the state is sort of reimbursing the district for the portion that we paid? How does it work?
Transportation aid is a percentage, so it's, off the top of my head this year, probably, I'm going to guess, right, 40%?
47.40 was what we had last year.
Okay. See? So we get a reimbursement, so it's not a full 100% amount, but the transportation aid, in general terms, is sometimes better than what we're getting on state aid in general, on foundation aid.
Thank you.
And every time we purchase a new bus, we submit a report to State Education, let's call it SA 16, that tells them exactly, you know, what the bus is, what the purchase price was. And all the purchases that we talked about this evening for buses are off the New York State Office of General Services contract awards. So what OGS does, for anyone who doesn't know, is OGS goes out and they secure bids on everything from school buses to toothbrushes to, you know, and then they put those things forward, and yes, the school district can take advantage of those pricing options, which are pretty good pricing options for, so they kind of do the landmark in terms of securing the best prices.
And if a parent was interested in filling out a request form for a childcare site or for a private school on April 1st, how would they go about doing that?
That's another excellent question. I will show you. For those of you that know me, I'm a big fan of PowerPoint and hyperlinks. So this hyperlink is taken us to the district webpage. And there is a form, these forms are on the district webpage. So if you go to the transportation, forms and documents, you'll see here under forms and documents, there are private parochial transportation requests for the current school year, because we are still getting kids transferring in districts to private schools for next school year, and the transportation request forms for childcare. So these forms are on the state, on our district webpage, they're listed right here, and there are PDFs that you can download. The private school forms, the private school forms should be printed out on blue paper. I gotta accept. So here you'll see the transportation request for daycare. And what you would do on the bottom is you would provide the name of the daycare center, childcare provider, housing site, and you would list where they're being picked up in the morning, and where they're being dropped off in the afternoon, whether it's a daycare site or whether to get picked up at home. So these forms are available on the website, and they should be submitted to the registrar's office down at the board office by... April 1st, thank you. Very good.
You mentioned there's one route that's contracted route, can you explain why you have one that's not being handled by your staff?
Yeah, it had to do with the, without going too specific into it, it had to do with the availability of equipment. It was something that came up mid-year, and we didn't have the bus that was needed for the students' needs, so we had to contract it out.
And the other question I have is looking at the figures for the actual budget here. I noticed the, under the category of gas and diesel and the fuel cost for extracurricular, it's been proposed is the same as this year's, which is the same as the prior years. And, you know, knowing that the gas and fuel have gone down, at least for the consumer, I don't know how they are, you know, whether you're going through a state contract or anything, but could you explain why that hasn't, you know, isn't reflective of the price of gas and fuel?
Well, we do purchase the fuel off of the OGS site, and they post monthly postings that tell us what the fuel, going fuel rates are. That changes a little bit more than the rest of the products on OGS. So just in terms of the budget.
Right, for the budget.
The fuel is a little bit unpredictable.
Right. So the budget process, we kind of let it to be, made it flat on purpose. So you're going to see when we actually do the end of the year, that in the current year, we're going to have money available in that code. Because thankfully, and you're going to see that in the facilities area as well, so we've let it, we've left it flat, not knowing what the cost increase will be, but we are going to enjoy the benefits of not spending in that area because of the price.
And what actually, the extra money, at the end?
Well, the extra money in total will then go, when we start talking about the whole budget process, will either go into fund balance, or it will be appropriated fund balance used to reduce the levies. So as we get closer, we will talk, but I have to do estimates on what I, we believe will be excess in the budget codes.
Can you talk a little bit more about the monitors? Perhaps I was naive to believe that monitors were on all of our, at least, elementary buses. I see that we have 30. Can you tell us more how they're utilized? Because...
Okay, I'd be happy to. First of all, there's requirements to be a bus monitor. You have to, the minimum age to be a bus monitor is 19 years old, and the minimum age to be a school bus driver is 21. So there are some states where they don't have those minimum ages, but here in New York, we're very strict. There are some, all of our bus monitors go through the same approval process that anyone would, working in the school district, in terms of being figured out through the State Education Department. And you have, they have required training that's set forth under the SCD regulations that they have to comply with. In terms of how we utilize them, again, the priority is always going to be those students, those students with IEPs, that it's written in their IEP that they need to have a bus monitor, they will have a bus monitor. The, I think I, the number I listed of substitutes, those are people who are technically substitutes, but we don't see a lot of them. So I'm not sure how much longer they're going to remain substitutes. They're on a perky basis, so, you know, we call them if they're available, you know, to cover a vacancy, they can come in and do it. If they're not, we have to pull someone from another bus.
The other important part about school bus monitors is that we receive transportation aid on the bus monitors that are designated for special ed. We do not receive transportation aid for the other monitors. So we've had monitors on buses, the district believes that that's an important part of transportation, but, and there are other districts in the county that do not have bus monitors, it's just the drivers. So you have heard us talk in the past about having to make budget cuts, and that's one of the areas, but for now, we feel it's an important part. So they're not on all the buses, but they're on the majority of what we have.
And the majority, okay.
Yes. And just in terms of transportation aid, I do want to point out that we did host a regional transportation aid workshop here in Beacon, in the high school on October 16th. I remember that date because it was my wife's birthday, and I had to get permission, we were to do that. But we did host it, and we have representatives from all over the Hudson Valley coming in, and we had a guest speaker who came in. We did a really excellent job discussing some of the real specifics of transportation aids.
And then you gave us a couple of things to think about, things that you might need in the future. Can you give us any type of dollar values to attach to those items? I know generators have come up before, I know that talking about those heavy doors is something that we've talked about in this discussion before, but can you give us a dollar value to attach to?
I can, specifically for the generators. The dollar value here with generators, we got a bid last year, we're talking two generators for the facilities, we have two buildings down there, and the generators came in for the two of them, it was right around $100,000. In terms of the replacing the diesel tank, I wouldn't have those figures just yet.
So those, I had, if you notice in most of the budget presentations we're doing, we're talking about future considerations, because the plan is within the next year or two to go out for a capital project. So I think... So I think it's important for each of the areas to come up with these items that we wouldn't be able to pay for in the general fund budget, but would be perfect to put in a capital project. So those are the kind of things that we're gonna look at. The DE, how much the DEC fines are?
Just to give you an idea, if we don't do this, I have my water bottle here, I'm just gonna give you an example. This is an underground fuel tank. You'll notice as the level of product in the tank rises and falls, the diameter of the tank is different. So for each inch of fluid, there's a different logarithm, mathematic formula, that calculates the amount that's in the tank. Now, the amount will vary based on a number of things, one of which is temperature. Depending on how hot it is, in newer days, last, in the past few years, we were experiencing twenty degree difference, thirty degree differences in each day's temperature. What that does is that causes the product to expand and contract. So basically, what was happening was the leaks that we were having to report weren't actually leaks. They were product expansions. And they do what's called a ten-day reconciliation. So every day, you take an accounting of what's in your tank, what was pumped, what you received in terms of delivery. And they allow you, I wrote down here, but for our thirty, for our thousand gallon tank, we were allowed to have a variance of seven, seven point five gallons. So the allowable variance on your ten-day, you take a ten-day period, and every ten days, whether it's a weekend or holiday or whatever, this report needs to be done. So this is for underground tanks. So we would do this report, and we were allowed what's called an allowable variance, which is one, three-quarters of one percent, or point zero zero seven five. So for our thousand gallon tank, our allowable values, variance was plus or minus seven gallons. So if we were down seven point five gallons. So if we were missing eight gallons, we had to report it as a leak. If we had ten gallons more, if we had a reading of ten gallons more than what was supposed to be in the tank, we had to report that as a leak, because it's an allowable variance in either direction. So we were getting these fluctuations. We were having our contractor come in to recalibrate the tank readings. We were doing all kinds of things, and they weren't really giving us the desired results. So in order to avoid the DEC fines, we went to replace the gasoline tank. And that was giving us that allowance of seven point five gallons. Now, our diesel, five thousand gallon tank would give us thirty-seven point five gallons. So we weren't, we didn't have fuel missing or leaking. It was just, you have different measurements. And they used to, you ever seen where the gas station, you go out with a stick, the big ruler, and you stick it in the tank? Well, now they have electronic measurements, and some of them are temperature-controlled electronics, and some of them are stick measurements. So it's, I'm trying to refrain from using a type of mathematics, but it's kind of like math. And so you take this average over ten days, and they give you this allowable variance over ten days. So what we were looking at in terms of DEC, they said, you ought to replace your tank. If you don't replace your tank, we're gonna start fining you for these things, where they really, really weren't missing fuel or anything, but they were gonna fine us anyway. That fine would have been a fine of thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars a day. So it was well worth it for us to look at replacing that tank. So when we talk about replacing the diesel tank, this is kind of why we're trying to get ahead of the ball on this. It's not that, you know, we have, we have a very, very strict control system over our fuel. All of our vehicles have key fobs that tells exactly which vehicle went in, and all of our drivers have pins. So our fuel consumption is very, very tight, our fuel accountability. But it's these little variations in measurements that's making us to take this cautious approach.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions? Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Next, we have Karen Keller to give us a brief update on the DCEP and the SEP plans.
We'll just take a moment to get the PowerPoint up. While we're waiting for our PowerPoint to be put up on the screen, I just wanted to once again thank the, the work of the review committees for both the Beacon High School SEP Committee and also the District Comprehensive Improvement Plan Committees. They worked really, really hard together. We met over a period of four times. And what was really, I think beneficial, is how having, you know, an increase in number. Okay, so I can do that here. There we go. Okay, go back. An increase in number of participants, and really, really collaborative work. So I wanna again thank those people, and some of them are here tonight, that sat on these committees with me. So our priorities. So what, again, these were plans that have been reviewed and revised based on the work of these committees. But our priorities haven't changed particularly. Always we're about improving student achievement and academic success. One of the things we've been really focused on, and we've heard about this through the plans, and even the school plans that the principals had shared with us over these last few months, the revitalization of the Positive Behavior Intervention Support System. We are in the throes, and we even had a very engaging and entertaining kickoff in one of our elementary schools on our anti-bullying program, or really, we like to say bullying prevention program. And that's through the Olvea system, and it was very, very well received. And other schools are kicking that off as well this month. We are doing work with some of our RTI committees, our Response to Intervention Committees, to improve academic achievement in those areas. Building a sense of community that's happening with, beginning to reconnect with the task force, the dropout task force, but also through the PBIS and the Olvea's programs. And evaluating professional development. So let's talk about improving student achievement. You have curriculum and instruction, curriculum development, school and society. We are looking at further developing inquiry. So if you look at the bullets, comprehension, strategy, instruction across the content areas is continuing to happen. We had our literacy consultants coming in in January. We had Ann Goodvis here at the middle school. Next week, we are going to have, I believe, Kristin Zamke in two of our elementary schools. In the following week, Angela Schrodin and the other elementary schools. They were to be here last week, but we had a snow day, and we had to reschedule those. But it's embedded professional development, the best kind of professional development, where the consultants work with host teachers, with other teachers. They pre-brief a lesson, plan together, they demonstrate the lesson, and then they debrief the lesson. And there's ongoing communication as, throughout the year. Student engagement and thinking models. Part of the work of the literacy is to go deeper with the thinking, reading as a thinking skill. But also, we have other consultants coming in for our students with English, that are English language learners, and really working with teachers that have English learners in their classroom for, again, embedded professional development. The gentleman comes in and works with the teachers in the classroom, and then they, they also do planning together and collaboration together. Lesson planning is happening across the district. There was a bit of a focus this year where we wanted to include more rigor in the lesson planning, ensure that there are objectives and that were rich, that ensure that there is student engagement. And that is happening. The focused walkthroughs are another important component to really ensure that our students are learning at high levels as much as possible. And our administrators are working to, every month, they have a theme that they look for, but they're doing eight hours of walkthroughs a month. Which is, you know, going into classrooms for a briefer period of time unannounced, and really just getting an opportunity to, to see what's going on in the classroom, and also to see, to even talk with students during that time. Data-driven instruction is another important goal. We were looking at our Response to Intervention Program. We're still working on that. We are in the process of selecting data analysis protocols that can be used consistently across the district. We're a little behind in our, my goals for getting that done. But by the end of the year, we'll definitely have a sense of where we want to be across the district with some consistency. We're looking at skill deficits in our Response to Intervention Programs, and really an opportunity to identify instructional strategies to support all students. The revitalizing of our PBIS, those teams have really been galvanized. We actually had a meeting today with our consultant from the RSE Task and our data specialist on these teams. We're using a system called SWISS two, that we're going to be inputting information into kind of keep track of our referrals and get a sense across the district, across the school, where some of the problem areas are. So that's work that's going to be continuing through the end of the year. We, most of the rollouts have been happening in the fall. And I know that the high school will be having their rollout for PBIS very, very soon. And part of the focus on positive behavior intervention support systems is building community. And that's also the focus when we look on the next slide in terms of implementing a bullying prevention program, the Olvea's program. It's really an opportunity for more adults in the school system to connect with children in more effective ways. And that's happening through community conversations with children, really facilitating those conversations to help kids to open up. And so that's the work that's happening, where we agreed that we were going to start that in the second half of the year. And it's the foundation work, and we'll build on that as we go into the following school year, into 2016, seventeen. We are hoping that our RTI, our Response to Intervention Programs, will build on the best practices that are already in place. Again, I talked about selecting the progress monitoring tools, and identifying strategies to support learning needs with instructional support. So some of our instructional support teachers have been working on RTI teams, have been helping or assisting on the teams, particularly in the high school, and, and working with teachers to provide strategies as an example. Additional strategies to work with students, and developing learning plans, and then monitoring progress. The building community, as I mentioned, it's happening in a lot of different ways, particularly through PBIS, as well as through our Olvea's program, as we roll that, those out. But also, we are hoping, planning to resume the drop-off, dropout, excuse me, task force meetings. There have, some have occurred already in January, and more will come. But we, there was a lot of work that was done last year with the different action teams. We had an attendance action committee, we had a parent education action committee, building community action committee, that we're all working. And so we will come together to debrief those, the work that was done, and consider recommendations. Now, some of those recommendations did help to inform our, our current plan. And we want to, part of the work that we want to do is to include a broader representation from identified subgroups, monitoring progress and engaging more families as partners. So an example of that is we were suggesting that we could provide more than one event in a given night, and we might show some more, some more impact, or have more people attend. The other thing we did to make that happen, we had an ENL parent orientation recently. And we had robocalls that went out, they went out also in Spanish. But we also had our ENL teachers call these families directly to invite them to come. And we had a far better turnout this current year than we did the year before. So that's an example, we want to do more of that kind of work. We want to be able to think about different trainings to develop meaningful partnerships for teachers and parents, and host workshops for parents in conjunction with school events, as I just mentioned. We are working with our parent communicator, her name is Fatima Ansar. And we are planning a workshop for parents at the elementary level on the Common Core. And that's in the planning stages, and we hope to have that going on at the end of March. So that's, that's a plan in place, just to give you an idea. Professional development is always another component, a very important component of the work that we do to support teachers. And we have been increasing our communication efforts with administrators at our monthly meetings, with teachers, with various learning groups. I work with the content coordinators, I meet monthly with the ENL teachers. The service providers are providing professional development. And our instructional support teachers are also working in tandem to, to provide professional development in meaningful ways. What we are planning to do is through evaluation, this was the year we really increased our usage of My Learning Plan, which is an online system for professional development, where hours that teachers put in can be tracked. But also, we can look at the evaluations. Teachers evaluate the particular program online, and I look at those, and I get a sense of where we are. I share that with the presenters when they're presenting. So we want to make sure that the work that we're doing is meaningful, and it can grow and to improve as well. So that's another area that we're, we're focused on. I'm also working on developing or forming a professional development committee and curriculum committee, and in the process of gathering people that could, that would participate in that, in that committee. And we'll be meeting very soon. One of the things we would like to do is to do a needs assessment. And I'll have some samples that we can look at, and develop that together, get that information out to teachers, bring that back, and then, whoops, really quick, bring that back and, and build our professional development programs from there, so that it'll be more of an organic process. So I have mentioned once before that our DCEP and our SEP are living documents. They are posted on the webpage. The revised versions will be posted on the webpage tomorrow, so be on the lookout for those. They would be on the district website, front page, under District. And they have various documents, you'll find them there tomorrow. They have been, and will continue to be shared with faculty and staff. And we monitored them, monitored them very closely with the reviews that we did with our review committee. I like the product, I think it's more succinct, and we have tied... I like the product, I think it's more succinct, and we have tighter smartfolds, our data-driven needs statements are clearer, and we have more time-sensitive action plans. Those were some of the improvements to the DCEP and the SEP. These will develop into multi-year plans. We want to build road bus programs over, over the course of the next few years, and we want to ensure, more important than anything, that all students access rigorous, engaging, and joyful learning experience. And we really, I mentioned this also once before, to bring the joy back into the learning, that's first and foremost. One of the, we've talked about in the, the, these plans, they're under different tenets, and tenant two would be leadership, tenant three is curriculum development, tenant four would be teacher practice, tenant five is social, emotional developmental health and learning opportunities, and tenant six is family and community engagement. So they're sort of intertwined, but the lion's share, you can see in this particular slide, if we look at those tenants into a conceptual frame for the Common Core learning standards, let's say, it's heavily weighted in, you know, curriculum and teacher practice. And the instructional shifts are really highlighted throughout, and we've really focused on those in our plans, I believe. So you see there, those are in more common language, the instructional shifts for ELA, and then you also have it for mathematics. So for example, students read A True Balance of informational and literary text, they build knowledge about the world through the text, they are focused on using vocabulary at deeper levels, so it transfers across the content areas. And mathematics, they focus deeply on the concepts, we've talked about that, so they really tie, this really ties very closely with the six shifts in the Common Core that are listed on the Engage New York site. We talked about, I mentioned focusing deeply in math, really going deeply into understanding and functionality in terms of real-world application for, for the work that we're doing in math, but also the dual complexity. There's got to be a balance between automaticity, being able to know, you know, know and understand the facts, and being able then to, to effectively complete or go through a multi-step problem and, and understand word problems, and the literary element that's more embedded in the math work that we're doing. So we keep moving forward, and the way we do that is we'll do a needs assessment, we plan from that, we contextualize it, implement it, evaluate it, and keep going in a particular, in that circle. In terms of the needs assessment, one of the things that we will be doing very soon is working with the K-12 insight group, and we're going to be surveying the students' grades three through 12, the staff, and we're also going to be including a parent component in that, so they'll be surveying, going out for parents as well. Most of the schools participated in the K-12 insight survey last year, it ties very nicely with the, the, the DITSD work, with the DCEP and the SEP and the tenants. And we can take a look at, compare how, how we're doing, the strengths, and it'd be really nice to get a baseline for the parents and an opportunity for parents to weigh in on, things that are going on in the school. So there you have it, those are the highlights. Again, you will see the actual plans on the website, the revised plans tomorrow morning. So, any questions?
Okay, thank you.
I'm taking a look at the building community across the district as it relates to dropout task force.
Kenya, Kenya, can you just speak up, I can't hear you.
Community.
Thank you. That's better, thank you.
Community built across the district. So as it relates to the dropout task force, I'm a little long about the January 2016 rollout, only because it, like, are we starting now with this, so that this is an actual rollout in January? Because when you look at the graduation rate, 2012, it was about 72%, and that was from our August graduations, right? So now you look at today, 76% last year's graduation, June, 80% as of August. So if these issues are issues that we're actually, obviously, we're addressing now, if we get the front on these now, and this ball actually rolls out in January, we may see an increase in the graduation rates that occur in June and then push us even further in the November. So I'm just worried about this delay here.
I know, and, and there's been a lot that has gone on in the district in the, you know, the fall, and that the intention was for us to get together sooner, so, but there is work still going on in the schools, and we're seeing that, we're seeing that through the, you know, credit recovery work that students are doing. We have seen an increase in the graduation rate, so we, you know, we're pleasantly surprised that work is continuing, Kenya, but we, I, we don't want to lose sight of the fact that we do have the dropout task force that had started and we can't decide on that work. So we did take a little bit of a, we were sidestepped a little, but we will, we want to get back to that. I know that the attendance committee has already met, and they've taken a look at some of, of the data. I will be meeting with the parent education committee very soon, I'm working on that, and I would like to invite the, the parent communicator coordinator to come to that meeting. So, and their work, even though we haven't met necessarily, we had done a survey last year, we, we, we use the information that we gleaned from that survey to, to form, to formulate some ideas as far as parent workshops that, that might be of interest to parents that we could, we could put forth. So there are other pieces of that committee that we need to pull together, and so we, we're working on it.
Right, this one, because this is part of our plan, like, we, there was something...
And it was, absolutely, absolutely. It does, it does. So we're a little behind, and I apologize for that, but we are working on it.
So I just have a question, and the attendance committee did meet, I participated on that committee, we did meet, I want to say we met in December. Not all the members could attend, but we did have a meeting, and we were looking actually for some more members for that particular subgroup, because it's a, it's a rather small group. So that leads to my question, if I were a community member and I was interested in being involved in the dropout prevention task force, is there going to be, like you said, with the OLVEAIS kickoff, or is there going to be, is it just going to be the groups will be reconvening in their small segments, where we all move back together again, so that if new people maybe wanted to get into some of those committees that were small, they could, do you have a plan?
Yeah. What we had intended to do was to pull all of the committees together to kind of debrief the work that, that they had done the year before. And so that's, that's an area we can, that's something we can certainly explore. I wanted to get our parent education committee together to just kind of reconvene. So that's a conversation that I'll have with, with Amory to determine when would be a good time to do that and when, you know, what we could do to, to bring everyone together.
I do agree with Kenya, though, that I think the sooner the better.
I hear you, I hear you. And that's why I didn't want to, I know that we've been, things have been a little bit crazy, and we've tried, but we've been going in a lot of different directions, but I didn't want to lose sight of it, because it has been in the plan, it was a pretty important force last year. So we'll, we'll pull that together as soon as we can. We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll quickly review the agenda. We'll have student and school presentations, parent groups, open to the public, superintendent's report, our dwarf comments, including committee reports. We will be approving the nomination of a candidate for BOCES. We'll have the consent agenda, we do have an addendum, which is an addendum to the non-instructional agenda, it's an appointment of a tight list. Do we have any students or school presentations tonight? Any parent groups? Looks like we have a few.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Corrales, and I am speaking tonight on behalf of Advocates for Beacon Schools, known as ABS. Our school district is at a significant juncture with a large and growing stakeholder interest in the policies and decisions that are being made on behalf of our students. This is certainly a fundamental component of a successful school district. I would like to address the paramount issue tonight of the district's search for a permanent superintendent of schools. What is called for now is true stakeholder involvement and a shared comprehensive vision for our district. The stakeholders are here, and we are ready to cultivate that vision. At the last Board of Education meeting, ABS member Kristen Flynn presented the ABS Vision Bus, which we hope will be one vehicle for community input. ABS is also working on a community survey tool to gather ideas from a variety of sources and populations in our school district. Please check out our website, advocates12508, or our Facebook page, Advocates for Beacon Schools, for updates on these initiatives. What about a town hall-style meeting or a series of informal, smaller forums to garner community input? ABS is ready to work on behalf of these and other outreach endeavors to help our school district realize its goals. It is imperative that we have meaningful consensus-building conversations prior to starting the official superintendent search process. I have heard Mr. White, Mr. White voice this publicly, and I have also heard other Board of Education members agree that stakeholders will be an important component of the process. I urge you as a body of elected officials to now follow through and make sure that the mistakes of the past are not repeated. This is an amazing opportunity to finally get it right. As a school community, let us seize that opportunity. Beacon is and could be portrayed as an exciting place that would attract talent from a wider area than the Hudson Valley. Let's be ambitious in our search and not allow ourselves to be limited to even New York State in our quest to find Beacon City School District's next superintendent. We are a community with a diverse and talented student body and an active and engaged stakeholder community. Let us cast a wide net with the confidence of our shared vision and priorities as a total school community. Let's all be advocates for Beacon Schools together. Thank you.
Good evening, I am Wendy Mann, president of the Ramout PTO. This Friday, February 26th, we will be hosting our basketball tournament. The teams will consist of Ramout faculty, Beacon High School faculty, the Beacon Police Department, and Slater Fire Department. Mr. Wright, principal of Forestale, along with Mr. Carafaro from Forestale, will be on one of the faculty teams. The doors will open at 6:00, the game's going to start at 7:00. Tickets will be $5 a person, children five and under are free. I invite the board and everybody here and whoever else can come to join the fun. And I'd like to have Deborah speak to everybody about the state testing.
Good evening. So as some of you know, we had a New York State test refusal committee. It was a really great experience for me, I got to work with our wonderful principals, PTO members, administrators, and this year we have developed a very clear process for parents who would like to refuse the state test for their students. Just to be clear, this is the grades three through eight Common Core assessment. This has nothing to do with the Regents exams, I have seen that bubbling up, so it's a separate, separate issue, you can't opt out of that. If a parent intends to refuse the test this year, we have a letter that clearly describes what the procedure will be for that. And then there is a letter that they can check off a few boxes, fill in a few lines, and send to their child's school. This was done with, primarily with Principal Candello and Principal Soltis, because the needs of the elementary schools are a bit different than the middle school. Once the school receives the letter from the parent, they will either cut off the bottom, if it's middle school, but the, an office staff person will receive the letter, sign it, cut off the bottom, hand that to the student to bring home. We all know middle school kids are great at bringing those things home to their parents. Elementary school, the principals will take care of sending a letter home via the communication So these are available, one thing, parents have the right to refuse the test up until the day before the actual test. We are highly recommending that if a parent would like to refuse the test, they do so by March 18th. This is so that they can be assured to receive notification that their child will be, accommodations will be made for their child, and so that principals have time to plan for all those numbers, whether they're large or small, and make sure that space is made for those students. At the bottom of one of these letters, there are two very helpful links. One is to the memo that went out to all of the New York State superintendents outlining what the changes are that have been made on this year's assessments and what the plans are for the future year's assessments. The other link is for the Engage New York website that has a lot of great information about Common Core, about the assessments, about how the data, about how to interpret the scores that parents will receive. So if parents would like these letters, first of all, we have some here, Wendy has some over there. The hard copies will be available at the next Board of Ed meeting, they will also be available at PTO meetings. It's my understanding that on March 9th, there will be a PTO meeting that will address the issues of the state test, what's coming up, what's involved in opting out, both on the elementary and middle school level, I believe parents will be receiving information about that soon. And as of today, the Advocates for Beacon Schools that you just heard about, they have links to these documents on their website, advocates12508. And we are in the process, I believe, of having these interpreted into Spanish, translated into Spanish. That's everything on my list, thank you very much.
Thank you. Open to the public. Elizabeth Sannacola.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Sannacola, and I'm a ninth grader at Beacon High School. And first off, thank you for recognizing all the music students, it feels nice to be a music student that's actually recognized for once. And that's actually one of the reasons I'm here tonight. My younger sister is in Ramout, and they haven't been without a chorus teacher for over a month, and I think that's not really okay. And I think that's not really okay to just have chorus as a throwaway period because they've just been doing worksheets and taking out their phones and working on classwork for other classes. And I feel like if this was math or science or even gym, there wouldn't even be a day without a qualified teacher, but this has been going on for over a month. So I would like to know when the teacher is going, like when the new teacher will be appointed and starting at Ramout. And also if any of the Ramout kids can participate in NISMA, which is a program that starts in sixth grade, goes up until 12th grade, and hopefully you advance to a new level each year. And if they don't get to participate this year, it would set them back and it would put them at a really big disadvantage and it would really reflect poorly on their transcripts. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, thank you for that question. So I'm just going to give you a little bit of information. Our middle school chorus teacher, Mr. Camaro, resigned January 22nd. So we have, he notified the district of his position and we advertised for a new teacher and we did hire Mr. Cunningham, who's coming from another school district on the January 29th Board meeting. But part of New York State education rules is that a teacher must give 30 days' notice when they leave a school. So we are anxiously waiting for Mr. Cunningham. He is relocating to the area. He came in actually the other day to visit, so we're excited for him to come. And yes, unfortunately, the chorus students at the middle school did have a period, they had a substitute teacher. It's very difficult to find substitute music teachers, I will tell you. We did look, but we really were at a lack of a music substitute teacher. So we are excited he's coming. Mrs. Stickney was working with the middle school chorus students this week to kind of get them up to speed for Mr. Cunningham to come. So the answer to NISMA, I'm not sure. So I'm going to say that. I'm going to reach out to Ms. Beakley and find out about that. So that part I will know. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Buck? Mr. Buck asleep? It's your turn.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Frank Buck and I am a taxpayer and a resident of the Beacon City School District. My friends, I have appeared before this Board of Education on many occasions to speak, most times about the lack of diversity in the instructional staff and the lack of transparency in the Beacon City School District Board. And although I haven't appeared before this board recently, I am fully aware of the turmoil as well as the challenges and changes this board must now confront. And for that reason, I feel this is a propitious time to present you with another substantive issue. For almost six years now, I have come before the Beacon City School District Board of Education to share my concern about the lack of diversity in staff and the lack of understanding of the academic benefits of diversifying. In 2010, the Beacon City School District website displayed data showing that only five of 266 instructional staff were minority, five of 266. At the same time, that same webpage confirmed that student enrollment in Beacon City School District was now almost 53% minority, black, Hispanic, and Asian. I also must add that since bringing that information to the board, there has not been one piece of information publicly made about diversity, staff, minority programs or other. It's taken off the website the next day and nothing has been shown about it since. It was in August of 2011 that I first made the Beacon Board of Education aware of this data and of the unfairness and inequality that it stood for. In response, current president of the BOE publicly acknowledged at that meeting that staff diversity, meaning minority instructional staff...
That's time is to vote.
Excuse me? Wasn't issued...
Give me just a minute, Mr. Buck. Give me just a moment. Our policy did change from the last time that you were here, where Mr. White now let speakers know that they're about to exceed the three-minute mark. He did let you know. I'm guessing that you didn't hear him and you have now exceeded the three minutes.
I heard it here, but I didn't know the three minutes had gone on that fast.
It did, it did.
Sorry. Can I...
Well, it's the board president's discretion. I don't, I don't know that it's the board president's discretion.
Policy.
That it is my discretion.
No.
It's a policy that we follow three minutes. And I've been berated by the public, I've been berated by board for allowing people to speak. The board and the public know that I wish to hear Mr. Buck speak. Mr. Buck knows that I wish to hear Mr. Buck speak. I need to know, does the Board of Education wish to allow Mr. Buck to speak? Can we make, Mike, is that something that we can do? Can we make a motion to violate the policy? Is there something that we can do?
Well, the board established a policy. The board is at liberty to suspend the policy for...
Can you use the microphone?
The policy establishing the three minutes per speaker, which by the way is a fairly common policy for boards, was established by the board. So the board is at liberty to suspend its policy to the extent that it deems inappropriate to do so. The issue involving the board suspending its policies with respect to some speakers and other speakers is that people are treated differently. But in terms of the answer to the question that you posed, since it is a board-established policy, the Board of Education is, certainly has the authority to suspend the policy.
So a motion would be needed by a member of the Board of Education and then seconded with a majority vote in order to suspend the policy to allow him to speak. I'm asking, like, I, you know...
That would certainly be one way of doing it. I believe the board president can also just by consensus ask the board whether or not there's, the board will the board to allow Mr. Buck to complete his comments. And I believe that would be an equally permissible way for this three-minute policy to be suspended for, so as to allow Mr. Buck to complete his comments. I don't think you need a formal motion, second, and a vote, although that's certainly a permissible way of ending. I think it's probably more formalistic than is necessarily under the circumstances.
So a show of hands, who wishes to allow him to speak would work?
If you deem determined that there's consensus on the board's part to allow Mr. Buck to finish his comments, then I think you have the discretion to allow him to do so.
Can I ask if this is something that we'll be doing on a regular basis? Or, I mean, there have been many other impassioned speakers who've had a lot of things to say and we've never made a motion or anything to break our policy. So if that's something we're going to start doing, I have concerns because I've seen many people very passionate about their issues who've been stopped from speaking because of the policy. I support maintaining the policy, but obviously I'm one vote out of the board. However, you know, that would be the question that Mike brought up. If we do this for one person, then we will need to start doing this for other people who aren't finished, which kind of goes to the reason for the three minutes. That's just my thought.
I do agree with Mrs. Galbo as well.
I also agree.
I would agree. I think there's a procedure in place to decide what policies we suspend or not. So I would say, you know, if we suspend this policy, what makes it that we can't suspend other policies?
I'm sorry.
Is there anyone to object to my continuing my statement, any board members?
Yes, Mr. Buck, they all have that. So I'm sorry.
I just wanted to hear somebody say that. I've linked into the record my remarks to be included in the minutes of this meeting.
Melissa Rukowski.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Rukowski. I am a taxpayer and parent of children in the district. I make this appeal to the Board of Education to commence a bid process for new legal counsel immediately in accordance with Policy 5410. Policy 5410 states amongst other things that goods and services must be procured in a way to assure the prudent and economical use of public monies in the best interest of the taxpayers and guard against favoritism, improvidence, extravagance, fraud, and corruption. Favoritism, fraud, and corruption. This is exactly what we have been rallying against, but our legal counsel has refused to take part in the rally. Instead, he has supported favoritism, fraud, and corruption. Here are but a few examples. In May 2015, Michael Rukowski wrote a letter to the Board of Education, sending forth violations of Federal Code Title IX. Instead of district's counsel responding that he would look into and remedy if necessary the issues the letter raised, he instead fired back a letter dated July 10th, 2015, which simply stated that we were wrong. Upon receiving this letter, we contacted the Office of Civil Rights. The Office of Civil Rights investigated the claims, found them to be meritorious, and issued a letter stating what policies the school district is in violation of. In order to rectify this without further intervention by the federal government, the school district and the Office of Civil Rights entered into a four-page resolution, which was signed on January 25th, 2016, three days after Dr. Walkley resigned, to rectify the many issues. This, of course, begs the question of why didn't legal counsel acknowledge and resolve these violations when first raised without requiring intervention of the federal government? Second, in July 2015, the school district's counsel was presented information about the unethical, illegal, inappropriate leadership of the school district. When this information was presented, counsel states he determined it to be without merit after his own in-house investigation. Yet, when presented with a Title VII complaint, not even a lawsuit, just a complaint, he advises you, the Board of Education, to hire an objective investigator to look into the situation at the cost of $10,000 to the district. I cannot imagine that this complaint could possibly merit an investigation more than what was presented in the petition filed with the State Education Department, which contained irrefutable evidence of wrongdoing. Once again, this begs the question, who does the legal counsel represent? Is it the former superintendent, the former BTA president, or the school district? I think policy says it's the school district. And on Friday, our previous superintendent filed a lawsuit in federal court against a district employee in violation of a contract she negotiated with legal counsel. This contract states that the superintendent agrees she shall, if asked about the school district in this government body, make no derogatory comment, no derogatory comment about individual school officials or employees. What will legal counsel advise the board to do about this clear violation of a contract that he negotiated with the previous superintendent? Thank you.
Jan Stark.
Good evening. At the last meeting, Ms. Galbo, when her comments asked about adding discussion items to the agenda, one way to accomplish this task is to have one meeting as a business meeting and a second meeting as a workshop meeting. And there's a number of districts that I've been involved with that actually do this. The only time you would have any type of business on a workshop meeting is if it was for a particular hire that had to take place right away. Tonight's agenda has Joe Galbo's name on it for appointment. Isn't this what the community complained about with Dr. Walkley with regards to preferential treatment and nepotism? I'm concerned about the distribution of more materials to board members when they are using board, when they're using business or school-issued computers. They have three teachers that are around the board. Anytime that you open any type of email, whether personal or school district, or information from Beacon to where they are working, that email now becomes property of that district. Things such as special education, statements, and anything that is private and confidential that may be disseminated to board members now becomes property of that other school district as well. That's fact. I'm still waiting for, my third thing here is, fourth rather, I'm still waiting for my FOIA request to be honored. I made this request on December 30th, 2015. Two months later, I have not received it. And I have made inquiries, three to Kelly and two responses, and five to Anne Marie with two responses, along with a phone call that went unreturned. It gives me a moment for pause, especially when I am greeted with indifference. I know that there is a review process that it should not take two months. Not when the Poughkeepsie Journal seems to get theirs right away. If we're talking about redacting, then explain how Mr. Rukowski received an email included in her complaint with, to the State Education Department between Superintendent Darwood and Mr. Lambert, the school board attorney, doesn't have fault under attorney-client privilege. My final item is, I started to mention once before, last time, is that there was emails that Mrs. Springer and Mrs. Uwer had sent out to parents in the community about a meeting that didn't take place and they contacted parents that they had no contact with. I have people that actually contacted me and said, "I don't know this person at all. Why are they sending me an email?" So my question is, did they receive those email addresses from teachers or administrators? Did the district help with that? Or was the parent portal where these parents' emails are on, was that compromised? Thank you.
John Burns.
John Burns, Beacon Teachers Association President. Our beloved school district remains in the news, most of it salacious and most of it really not newsworthy. But among the many articles and exposes was one that was both poignant and sobering. A recent editorial in the Poughkeepsie Journal stated that the Beacon City School District's future would best be served by stable leadership. As you know, we've had nine superintendents in 10 years and that's been tough to deal with. And while we listen to calls for new superintendent searches, desired qualities, and specific roads, we should travel to achieve these goals. I thought I'd let you know what the experiences of the Beacon Teachers Association has been for the last month and a half. We've seen teacher morale rebound and approach levels not seen since the days when Vito De Cezare was leading the district. Employees are feeling respected and appreciated. A good number of teachers are out for reasons ranging from maternity leave to dealing with cancer issues. Each of these people has been dealt with individually and with respect and compassion as they deal with their issues. dealt with individually and with respect and compassion as they deal with their issues. So while we look to the future, perhaps it's time for a respite, to take a breath, and to recognize what we have right here in our midst. Over the past four to six weeks, we have made more positive progress with Superintendent Corderoni than we did in the previous year and a half. It would be nice to have a superintendent with vast educational knowledge, but what we need right now is a people person. Anne Marie is a person with clarity, a real leader, and compassion. Anne Marie Corderoni is that person. The VTA would like the Board of Education to know that we believe extending Superintendent Corderoni's contract to the end of the 2017 school year would provide us with our greatest need in the Beacon City School District: stable leadership. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak tonight? We've completed everyone that's signed up previously. Yes.
Hi, I'm Adam McKibb. I have two sons that sergeant. I appreciate your wanting to stick to the policy about the three-minute time limit for speakers. I just wish that Mr. Bug had been able to finish his statement. If the numbers about diversity are true, that seems to be a very important issue, and I hope it's one that the board will take up. We have a very diverse community, and if, in fact, our teaching staff doesn't reflect that, that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wished to speak?
Good evening. Anything to say? I just want to make a comment. I hope that the board will relook at how many executive sessions that they're holding for session and when they hold them. To give you a little bit of history, the city Beacon Council at one point restructured their meetings so the executive session was at the end instead of at the beginning in order to maximize their public participation. That way, if business had to be discussed, they would discuss it, but they would not come back and make a decision. Public can go home. It's very hard for the public to engage when you wear them down. Also, you know, it's a little interesting that the executives that are called, while you refer to an item that would be covered in executive session, employment history of a person is usually singular. And I can't believe that, you know, one person can take so much of the board's time to discuss the employment history every single meeting. Maybe some clarification as to how that is run. Also, maybe some policing as to making sure that the executive session does not include topics that should not be executive session. Maybe that will speed up your executive So I ask that, you know, you look at your agenda in terms of maximizing public participation. You can take notes from the way the city council runs it. They run the executive session at the end, just one, and they're not coming back with any decisions. It just comes back for the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have one comment on the executive session material, and so we have thought long and hard. But we do, we don't speak about the same person in executive session, but as a people organization, that is what we talk about. We have individuals that need to be discussed. So that's why you're seeing the same information there.
Could you also speak to how we moved the executive session earlier at the request of the public, not only just a few months ago?
That we changed the power.
Yeah, at the request of the public.
Right. So we had done executive session in a little different way. So now we're doing executive session. We were asked to move the workshop portion to a little bit later in the evening to accommodate some of the people's schedules here. So we did do a change recently to try to get more people at the meetings. So we used to do it, you know, a little, we used to come and do workshop and then go to executive session, but that meant that the public was missing the workshop portion at the seven o'clock. So we have changed that a little bit just to accommodate people so that they now know to come a little bit later if they don't want to, you know, if they don't want to sit here while we're in executive session.
Terry Nelson, parent, taxpayer, and I would like to finish Mr. Bug's statement. I'd like to read it for him. So please forgive me. I've never seen these words before.
It's against some policy. The policy says that you cannot share your time, and if you don't finish, you're not permitted to continue someone else's statement.
It was in August of... It was in August of 2011 when Mr. Bug first made the BOE aware that the data and the unfairness and the inequality it stood for. In response to the current president of the BOE publicly acknowledged at the meeting, at that meeting, that staff diversity, meaning minority instructional staff, was an issue we neglected and must address. Now, after six years and four superintendents, this board has not shown any evidence of even considering, much less addressing the issue. After six years, this board has shown one shred of viable evidence that can verify any progress on this issue. Mr. Bug wants you all to understand that diversifying is not just about numbers. It is, most importantly, about enhancing academic performance and achievement, and lessening dropouts, and ensuring equal opportunity for minority students. Every day, thousands of B, C, S, D white students enter their schools and classes and see role models, people who look like them and can relate to them. They see people who live in their community. We see people who are often present at their religious ceremonies or who attend the same events as their parents. However, minority children in the B, C, S, D confront an entirely different situation. Why? Shouldn't minority students have the same advantage, seeing role models and people who look like them and can better relate to them? In 1999, the Pew Foundation, in conjunction with Northeastern University, conducted a survey to gain data on the impact of staff diversity. They surveyed 123 integrated public schools. In 2001, they released the results. Where minority staffing was within 5% of the minority student enrollment percentage, one, minorities had higher-than-average grade performance. Two, there were less behavioral incidents and dismissals of minorities than in any other area school. And three, they found higher-than-average attendance rates. Equally as important, they found that there was no measurable decline in the performance of non-minority students. My friends, Mr. Bug is here again tonight to say Black Children Matter. I am here again tonight to plead and to beseech and to absolutely demand that the BOE make diversity at the Beacon City School District a priority issue implemented with honesty and transparency. Mr. Bug strongly urges you to, as well as challenges the BOE to prioritize the development of a clear and salient goal to increase minority staff and make public any relevant and compiled data on the outcomes. Thank you.
My name is Michal Mart. I'm a parent and a taxpayer. And I wanted to say that I strongly support the statement by Mr. Bug. And there are also federal programs right now that are working on these issues. My brother is keeper, and there was a request for the New York State budget to address these types of issues. That being said, I do think that the public participation at board meetings was not consistently applied tonight. And unfortunately, Terry should not have been allowed to finish Mr. Bug's statement. Some of the board members were talking about it, but it wasn't communicated to the president. The attorney is sitting right here, and I just don't understand what's going on in this meeting because it's not being consistently applied. So, again, Mrs. Galbo has requested clarification of how meetings are conducted. I'm again requesting it. Personally, I do not have trust that this council is able to provide it, but this is ridiculous.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I just wanted to clarify how the board meetings were changed. My name's Meredith Heuer, H-E-U-E-R, for anybody who needs it. I do appreciate that the board changed when the executive session happened because it was this choice where you'd come and watch the workshop and then sit for an unknown amount of time waiting for the board to come back. Ms. Galbo brought up at the last board meeting, trying to bring in a place for discussion in the public part of the meetings. And it did make me wonder, what can you discuss publicly? Because Mr. Zoff was very clear about what goes on in executive session, but there's not a lot of room for you guys to discuss. There's been more in the last few months, and it's been very refreshing to start to understand the opinions that board members have and where people stand in certain issues. And I really appreciate that. I think the public really appreciates that. But it would be great to hear a little laundry list of what could be discussed publicly so that we can understand what is allowed in that area. Thank you.
I wasn't planning on speaking, but Lizzie inspired me with her statement. Rebecca Correllis, parent and taxpayer. I just wanted to make a comment on the music program K-12 here in Beacon. As Mrs. Kellogg knows from our past conversations, this is a very important issue to me personally, and I would really like to see music be calm in general, specifically vocal music, more of a priority, K-12 in this district. I hear a lot of wonderful things about the athletics, which is very, very good and wonderful, but I would really love to hear more of what we had tonight with the recognition of the four young musicians that were recognized tonight by Mrs. Stigney. I would really love to see us as a school district build upon that and not have a situation where children are not receiving instruction at the middle school in vocal music for a month. And I also wanted to follow up on the idea of the elementary band director being reinstated as a position in the elementary schools. This has been a topic of discussion over the past year or so and even further back. At one point, we did have an elementary band director, and then it was taken away, and then it was brought back, and then it was taken away again. So I do remember hearing it discussed and being told that it was intended to be reinstated this coming year. So I'm really hoping that that does happen. And I also just wanted to mention that, you know, when I listened to the high school presentation at the January 25th Board of Education meeting from Dr. Severdin, at not one time was band or chorus mentioned. The play was mentioned, which was great, but I didn't hear the word band. I didn't hear the word chorus. No music education programs were mentioned in that report. And I do feel that it needs to be more of a priority on our high schools, especially when we have graduation rates to consider, because these children that are in band or chorus, they do tend to graduate. And so we really need to put more of an emphasis on K-12 music education, but especially the high school. And I do hope to see that elementary band position reinstated for full-time elementary school band director. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So some of the things I was planning on saying have been said already, so I won't take too much time. I want to remind everyone first that the Winter Athletic Awards are March 2nd at 6:30 in the theater. I also would like to say publicly, Mr. Nemec, we've asked Mr. Nemec to bring some athletes to our next board workshop on the 14th after the athletic awards, so that they will come to workshop. There has been a little bit of discussion, which we haven't had in a few years, about snow days. So we had one, but the weather's been looking good, not to jinx us, but it looks that we may not use all five days. So I think the topic is, so what happens? So in the teacher's contract, we are able to give back to snow days. It's on the discretion of the teachers' union president and the superintendent. So Mr. Burns and I have had a preliminary conversation about what days could possibly be given back if we don't use any more snow days, since this is almost the last week in February. So we're working on that, and as soon as we get to a decision-making, we will inform the board and the public of what those two days will be. The calendar's kind of tight this year because if we had a late Labor Day and all, so we have to try to figure out what the best two days would be. So we're working on that. We will let the public and the parents know as soon as we can. The last thing I want to do is just make a general comment, which I kind of wrote down. So, in light of all the publicity surrounding Beacon and our school district in the last few weeks, I would like to take this time to thank all of our dedicated staff that have done a great job on staying focused on our students. There are many great things going on in all of our school buildings, which helps all of us remember why we are all here. We all hope that the amount of attention to things other than our children will end. So in the future, all the things that we read in the media will be about our schools and our students. Thank you.
Do we have any more comments tonight?
A couple of things just to mention. As a reminder, it's on the school district website. April 7th is meet our year regent, Judith Johnson, who is a regent for our area, New York State. So April 7th, 7 to 8, 30 p.m. at Arlington High School. She'll be there. You can ask her questions, and if you have any concern, you can express your concerns regarding state of education in New York. There's only certain topics she'll probably discuss. For example, she's not responsible for the laws regarding common court. That's the state legislator that does that, but the State Education Department is responsible for the implementation of that. And the regents are the ones who are in charge of all public schools, including our school. So it'd be worthwhile to come out to that. If you look at, if you look at the brochures up on the district website, it'll tell you where to send the questions to. They will take questions that evening, but they may not get to the questions then. So if you send your questions in ahead of time, they'll get collated and it'd be a much higher chance that they'll be asked of the regent at the meeting. So I encourage everybody to go to that. Reminder for anybody who is going, who's planning on running for the school board, I know that Kelly gives out the information, but just a reminder, I encourage you to go out to the meeting that's given by VOCs for prospective school board members. It's a great opportunity to learn about what it's like to be a school board member and gives you a better idea of what other roles and responsibilities of the school board. I also wanted to mention to Mr. Bug, made a few statements that I just want to, don't want the public to get the wrong impression. We have, in the past, when Mr. Bug had talked about diversity, I mean, I think most of, not all of board members agree with him in terms of it is a good goal to have a diversity of your students reflected in your staff. We did form a committee. Mr. Bug was on that committee. I was on that committee. We looked at ways that you could increase the diversity of your staff. One of the things for people to understand, it is difficult to do it. Number one, the pool of minority candidates for positions is smaller. I mean, they're a minority, so it's harder to find them. You're not allowed to ask for that. When people apply for jobs, you're not allowed to ask what's their race, for example, their race, religion, you know, things like that. So, and the system that we use for most of our teachers, OLOS, which is the state system, doesn't ask that either. So when you... So when you get your resumes coming in, you have no idea what the race, religion, or anything else is. And that's, I think, is appropriate. You don't want to make a decision, you know, based solely on those characteristics, but you're looking for the best candidate. But it does make it more difficult. You could be weeding out people based on that information and that's property, looking at their qualifications. And you may be weeding out minority candidates without even knowing that they're minorities. So it is difficult. You can't just say, I want, I only want to look at resumes for a certain race. It's just not something allowed to do, more is that information available? So it all comes down to, it's difficult. The things that, we did have a committee to say, how can we legally look at ways of increasing it? And really, all you can do is try and reach out to as wide a group of candidates as possible so that, you know, you're at least making sure that you're reaching minority candidates and they are applying for the job. If they don't apply for the job, then it makes it more difficult. And so there were steps that were taken. I'm assuming that HR, the HR function in the central office is following those, involve things such as making sure that you advertised in certain papers, you looked at certain schools, and we looked for new teachers, that you went to certain schools down in the city, for example, where there is a higher chance that you get minority candidates. And so, and I think the school board actually did, did we issue a statement? So the school board also issued a statement saying that we were committed to trying to increase the diversity of the staff. So it's not that nothing has been done. It's a difficult thing to do. It takes a lot of time and effort in order to get, and especially over the last couple of years, we've been reducing our staff, you haven't been increasing your staff. So, you know, it's not like we're saying we're going to let people go and replace them with minorities. So you have to wait until you have openings to need to hire as well. So those are all the things that come into play. The last thing I wanted to mention...
You can't, Mr. Burns, you can't.
The last thing I want to mention is regarding the superintendent research, I believe we all received some samples of RFPs from different school districts, Beacon, Newburgh, South Orange, Maplewood, and Lexington, as one of the steps of looking to hire a firm to, you know, as a possibility for helping us with the search. We need to send out an RFP, which is what, basically asking people to propose what they would do for us and us asking them as what are the services that we would like them to do. So I think that those came in today, so I don't think we've all had enough time to look at those. So I would just ask all of us to take a look at those, decide out of those four, I think the best approach is which are the four, does everybody feel is the closest to what we want and with either additions or subtractions from it. And then we can, at the next meeting, work with those ideas and see what we can send out as the RFP from Beacon.
I can't allow Mr. Zoff to get away with providing such inaccurate everything.
Mr. Bug, Mr. Bug.
And to let him prevail with this is absolutely false. I never served on a day with him about that. Number two...
Mr. Bug, the policy does not allow, you're putting me in a really tough spot, Mr. Bug.
I know it, but I'm tired of watching this board do nothing but lie. I bought 21 resumes from my board when the reason education of this board, not one of them was even interviewed, Mr. Zoff. Not one of them.
Mr. Bug, Mr. Bug.
And you're saying that no minorities apply? I bought 21 that I got in four days from State University.
I'm asking you, please.
No, I'm not going to allow this board, that this man get up here and continue to prevail on that kind of information, which is entirely false.
I haven't asked, Mr. Bug, the policy was put into place so that we don't continue to have this. I'm asking really nicely, really nicely, because I respect you, but please respect the board of education policy and...
Yes, but you think he should be allowed to get up here and tell that kind of a lie? That's what's wrong with the school board now. These people don't stand up for anything. And he sits here and puts out misinformation like that, and you want me to be quiet? That's why I hope all of you... That's absolutely ridiculous, and I can't let you say you can't tell that lie. That's an outright lie because I bought you 21 resumes that I recruited, not one of them was interviewed or even contacted, Mr. Zoff. Not one of them. And you're saying no minorities apply? Sure they do, but they don't even get a...
Mr. Bug.
Get out of here. This is ridiculous. It's been going on for seven years now and you have done nothing about hiring minorities or trying to prioritize.
So I would like to propose that on the next board meeting that we have an item in the agenda to discuss those RFPs. So it doesn't have to be like a new business section, so we could, it's going to be in the agenda that we're going to discuss in public, the RFPs and have...
And had these RFPs come to us sooner, we would have had on tonight's agenda a new business section where we could discuss just that, but we didn't have that in time to make that happen.
So can we also put in, can we just have that new business section on the agenda in case things come up during meetings?
You mean, just leave it as a standard?
As a standard and have it there at all times, just, I know that we're going to discuss...
Use it if we need it, kind of thing?
Correct. So also, there was an RFP that was sent out, or it was a company, I think it was the Kim Agency that was from Iowa that was sent out early or something, but I don't know, it just, we mentioned the other three specifically, so.
Can I just make one comment to, just to piggyback on what Mr. Zoff said, is that when we do the RFPs, I know, you know, we are committed to using, to getting the community feedback and that's part of the RFP process and what you want the search firm to do for us, whether it's, I prefer open forums where the whole community comes rather than select, you know, committee members, but that's something that we would put in the RFP, that we would want them to do for us. I just want to make that point clear so it's not like we're trying to establish something without any community input.
First, I just wanted to let everyone know that the policy committee from last Tuesday was canceled due to the snow day. It's rescheduled for this Thursday at 7:00 p.m. at the board office. We're still looking for that time, so hopefully we'll see some members of the community there. One policy that we're bringing back to the committee is the policy on homeschool students and that was one that we had brought, the committee had worked on and we had brought to the board and then it was sent back to the committee. So I'm wondering if there are any board members at this point who could just share some information with us as a committee that we can bring back to our committee with some details about other items you'd like us to look into with regard to the policy.
I mean, I can certainly respond to that because I was one of the people that had questions about. One, a couple of my concerns with policy were the sense it was really opening up the after-school programs and intramural sports to a population that currently doesn't participate. What would the cost be to the district? What's our best guess for number of students that would be coming to that? And the other one is, I wanted to make sure that we, that there was, maybe it's not the policy, maybe it's the superintendent procedures that go along with it, but my concern is that since certain after-school activities, there's only a limited number of people that can participate, for example, a school play. So what would, you know, how would we address issues where you have people who are not actually students within the public school district, who perhaps are taking parts away from students who are, you know, people who are in this, students in the district? I felt that that hadn't been addressed out of the unit.
Did you have a thought or was the section on loaning of materials not an issue?
Well, it was sort of a caveat to that, that it was at the discretion of the administrators. So, I mean, I'm assuming that that means that if it becomes cost prohibitive, that we could not, we could, you know, say no.
So I don't remember the exact wording, but I do know, I don't know if Georgia or Kenya or Melissa remember, but it said something along the lines of, if available. So I, we had asked Ann Marie at that meeting and one of the things we talked about was that she would go through a process of making sure that she had what she needed and extras for students that we had here and if there were excess that could be loaned out, those could be...
My concern is if it gets to the point where we don't have enough to send out, you know, if you have materials that are enough for our students but not for the homeschool students, is that going to get into an issue where someone claims that we're discriminating, you know, there's a discriminatory factor involved? And that's, you know, that's the reason why they're not getting it? And, you know, and sort of force us to get more materials, which once again now becomes an expense? So those are my concerns.
I just, before we brought it back, I wanted to have some more information. I just wanted to say that I, I had brought up last time the new business section on the agenda, so I'm glad to hear that that's something we're going to be adding. But, so if that appears on the agenda, what's the, maybe we need to talk as a board, or I don't know where this gets discussed about the procedure for adding something. So now, is it added, as Anthony asked to have something added and then at next meeting it would be added on? Is it motioned at a board meeting? Can it be added at the board meeting? So I don't know where we go to find that information.
The board can always by resolution add a new item to the agenda, whether it's a call under the umbrella of new business or otherwise, the board always has the ability to do that. Typically, the role of creating the agenda is between the president of the board and the superintendent. In doing so, they're guided by the board policy that's in place as to the agenda items and the order that they appear. It's not unheard of for the superintendent and the board president to add a separate item to the agenda that happens to be timely or something that they want the board of education to discuss. So the short answer to your question is, I think that the board of education president and superintendent in developing the agenda have the ability to add another item to the agenda, or the board can add a new business item to the agenda in the way that it typically adds items to the agenda.
With regard to the superintendent search, I just wanted to say that I'm happy that the board is taking a thoughtful approach, not a rush approach, taking our time. I signed up for a webinar through NISBA on March 9th that's free to NISBA members and it's similar, I think, to the binder that Bill had, but I think it's been updated conducting a successful superintendent search. So it's a webinar, so anyone who is interested, if you want a link, I can send it to you. It's for, I guess, any board members, superintendents, or district clerks who are interested. And as I said, it's free since we're members of NISBA. And then the last thing I just wanted to ask, with regard to the bus form, is there a way that it can be easier to find on the website? Like, could there be a link, like reminder, April 1st, buses do click here? I don't know how hard that is to do.
We can put something on the front page. Our, I mean, our goal is to have a new website. We're really trying to work hard, but between now and then, we will, I'll have it put on the front page as a reminder. So it'll come as soon as you can do it. I'll link to his page.
Thank you. Okay. The last comment I had is, I would like, maybe at the next meeting, if the board could consider setting up some sort of a rotation for reviewing grievances as they come before the board from the different bargaining units, you know, so it's a set rotation and as items come up, maybe people want a different process, but I feel like if we could get a process in place where the board members are informed, you know, there's agreements and here are the people who are rotating in to participate in reviewing the grievances if it does come before the board. Thank you.
And just going back to the RFPs, would it be possible, since we have them and we call them, like Bill listed them by names, like the Lexington and so forth, can we post those on the website since we're going to be discussing publicly, or is that something that can't be shared?
There's no legal prohibition why they can't be posted on the website. As a matter of fact, it would be appropriate, since you have them in advance and you're going to be discussing it, to post them on the website.
So is that something that we could do, Melissa?
Yes, do you want them on the website or do you want them on the public session of board docs where we're going to do it?
The location where you publish the public portion of, you know, the documents relating to that portion.
Okay, so it would be on board docs on the public portion, the public would be able to access it.
Okay, can we also add, did we check with Dutchess BOCs as well and can we add those to, can we add Dutchess BOCs to that as well?
Dutch, my understanding was that we were going to determine the RFP and then Dutchess BOCs was going to receive a copy of it. Is that how you want it? Yes.
So I just wanted to say, kudos to the chorus students that performed well at the event recently. I love singing, so to keep promoting that, I think it just forms a person and so kudos to you guys for that. Kudos to the teacher who actually carries that out, because there's a lot of work that goes into ensuring that those students are prepared. There were a lot of festivities in the district over the last week, so again, so all the PTOs and PTSOs that put together all these little dancers and everything, as well as the parents that participated in that, it's just a lot of work that happens ongoing and so know that your work is recognized. I attended the spectrum meeting and I just want to say to the parents and advocates in the district that there was a wealth of information there for parents with children who have IEPs, not just for children who are on the spectrum. They are broadening their horizon, spoke magnificently to the anxieties that children experience and what anxiety can do and how it can flow over the parents. The social workers, once again, have impressed me beyond belief. They continue to support each other and just put out information that is very helpful to families. So, you know, reach out to them, those packets are readily available. If somebody can't make it, try to get there and get them the information because it's just, you know, very important to, you know, the children's education. As it relates to diversity in the school and disproportionality, this is an area of concern for me, it always has been. I do know that a lot of work has gone into trying to diversify the school, not saying that the teachers that are currently here are not great teachers or can't speak to the children, but just to have, you know, a variety is great. I know that Karen attended many, many, many job fairs in an effort to try to diversify the schools. There has been some success with that. And then there is a nationwide concern with the amount of candidates that actually are becoming teachers. So there's a challenge for us worldwide with this, so we got to pay attention to the message. Consistency with the policy is a concern for me. I think that we just have to learn not to feed into what's happening with the crowd and feed into what the policy states. Some people will say, yeah, let this person finish. Other people will say, you violated the policy. And so I just think that we just have to be consistent so that we're not being viewed as being unfair, but just being consistent, I think, is the right thing to do. And there is, a public relations committee has been formed in the district. We did have the survey go out to, I believe, all of the board members now should be in receipt of the survey. Once we completed, the survey will go out to the community. In going out to the community, we will receive the community's response and then move forward. The goal is to put out the information within the district as it relates to the happenings and then whatever is decided based on the information we obtained from the survey. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Can I add just one thing? I just wanted to clarify, I sat on the committee with Bill as well when we did work with Mr. Bug and a few other community members who participated in rewording some of our hiring policies to incorporate some new things we wanted included with regard to diversity hiring and I believe we also read a resolution, our board, after, we had several meetings with this committee. We met, it wasn't videotaped, it was a policy committee that this group participated with, so I'm sure that if you look back through board minutes, we could find the time when that did take place, but I did sit on the committee with Bill. But I did sit on the committee with Bill. If it was a resolution? Yeah, it was a resolution. That would have been part of the board minutes, although I'd have to think back exactly which meeting that was.
Which superintendent was it on? Is the question.
Yeah, that's the one I'm thinking. It was Dr. Bandlow.
It was Dr. Bandlow.
I think it was in the fall of his tenure, if I remember correctly.
I don't remember what time of the year that it was. I know that there were a number of us on that, in those meetings. I don't think that we had many meetings. But again, it's been a number of years. But from the simplest of forms, prior to coming together and having those meetings, we advertised our positions, you know, for teachers in the district on the Duchess County Boces website. Basically, that's where we posted all positions. So the request was made by Mr. Bug and others that we broaden our outlook, right? That we use other, reach out in other ways to find candidates for our positions, and also to make it easier for them to find us. Through that work of that committee, we put together a resolution that we worked really hard with. And I believe when Mr. Bug speaks about a statement that's no longer on the website, he's talking about that resolution, is my belief. But through those meetings, we were able to, there had been a reason why we could not use OLAS. And maybe Mike can help me with that. But there was a reason prior to then that we were not able to use OLAS. We were limited to the Duchess County Boces page for our positions. And through those meetings, we were able to figure out why and correct. And we were able to post our positions on OLAS at that time. Mr. Bug spoke of, he had 21 resumes, and he did. Mr. Bug, at the same time, had a committee of his own with diversity as his goal. I attended a couple of his meetings. At one of those meetings, he gave me those 21 resumes. And they were all qualified candidates to teach in our district. Each of those candidates was instructed to apply via OLAS. Because I can hand a resume to someone, but they have to apply in our district in order to be considered for a position. It was my understanding that those candidates did not follow through with that step. It's been many years. I can't say with absolute confidence that that is exactly what happened, but I believe that those candidates did not follow through and did not apply through OLAS at that time. You know, I've been questioned regarding my feelings for Mr. Bug. On many occasions, I think that what Mr. Bug wishes to see, many of us wish to see, many of you sitting there wish to see. You know, we all benefit from being around all different types of people. I've said this before, and I think I've said it in this chair, that, you know, when we took our daughter to college in Boston, my husband had never been on campus, and he said, well, she's gonna, she's really gonna like it here. And I asked him, what makes you think that? He says, look around. It looks like Beacon, right? We have people not speaking English walking beside us. We have, you know, all different races and ethnicities and religions and all the things that make us great, right? And that's what we love about Beacon. And Mr. Bug's right. We can all benefit from that. And I have a tough time, I'll apologize. I have a tough time asking him to be quiet, because I believe in what he's saying. And I know in this chair, I have to uphold the policy, but I have a really tough time when it comes to this topic. And I apologize if that offends. But I would like to congratulate those students that were, that were recognized tonight, the chorus students. I don't know where the concert was held this year, but I attended that concert a couple of years ago, all the way out in Webatuk. And it's pretty overwhelming for those students to stand on those risers in front of that crowd. And a few of them kind of fell off. And so, you know, they worked really hard to get there. A lot of hours go in. And kudos to the educators that work with those students to get them ready to stand on that set of risers and perform for everyone. It's a great joy. And then I have to shout out our track team. I traveled into the city last night to support the Beacon Boys and Girls Track Team as they competed in the state qualifiers. And Anne Marie has let us know that we'll have some of those track kids come here and visit us next meeting. Our Beacon Boys Track and Field Team, you know, we're Little Beacon, and we compete against some really big schools. Our Boys Track Team did what they call a 3P? They won the Northern Counties. So that's, as a team, they beat every other team in all of Duchess and Putnam Counties. So they won the Northern Counties. They won their league. Now think, Northern Counties, that includes Arlington, that shows up at a track meet with three buses, you know, full of kids. And Ms. Snowden's over here nodding because she's been at track meets with me. So they won the counties, Northern Counties, they won their league, and they won their section. We have a young man on our track and field team, and I hope everyone's here next time to applaud him. But we have a young man on our track team who is number one in the nation. Not in New York State. He's number one in the nation. So I don't know. I think we have great kids doing great things, and the more we can focus on the great things that are going on, the better we'll all be. You want to read?
Well, it's really long, but I'll summarize.
Christina's found, while I was talking, she has found the resolution that we adopted at the time that Mr. Bug was part of her...
So I won't read the whole thing. It's very lengthy, but it was on May 12th, 2014. It was Policy 051214A. And it basically talks about the Board of Ed being committed to hiring the most qualified candidate for each available position, taking steps to ensure that a diverse pool of candidates is formed. It talks about our policy number 6211, which requires that certain actions be taken to obtain diverse groups of candidates. And it goes on to summarize the policy in that resolution. So if anyone is interested in taking a look at that, the policy is Policy 6211. And the resolution was voted on May 12th, 2014. And then its name is the date 051214A.
Doesn't sound like it could be right, though. 2014 is two years ago, right?
So it says, "The Board of Education does hereby direct the superintendent of schools to prepare and present to the Board of Education now later than May 12th, 2014."
Then might have been the second...
For the implementation of board policy. So either way, this is one of the items that came out.
Right. That's been a focus. I think so too. Because I was here for that, and the original statement and the original committee was before I got on, so.
Well, this is the date we approved the resolution.
Yeah, no, but I think that was a follow-up, a second request that he had to clarify.
Okay. I think somewhere in the agenda, I missed our legal update.
Yes, I forgot.
I still have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, yes.
Yeah, so I also wanted to mention the track athletes. I don't want to steal Marty's thunder, though, so I won't go into too much further detail. But I also wanted to mention the boys' basketball team, which finished at 16 and 6. They were League Code champions, and unfortunately, they lost in a tough sectional quartile game. The girls' basketball team also qualified for sectionals, and I believe that they lost, however, in the second round. Last but not least, I just want to mention that we are still targeting to have a career fair in the high school on May 25. Originally, some folks had signed up to help with that and have kind of fallen out of the loop a bit. So if you're still interested in helping with that, we still need some more people. You can either see me or email Miss Paul Eames in the high school guidance office. And again, that's May 25 in the high school for the career fair. Thank you.
My firm represents about 55 school districts in the region. And as a result, we attend a lot of Board of Education meetings. We are rarely the subject of public comment, whether it be good or bad. And on those rare occasions that we are, we rarely respond. And that's because we believe that the meetings shouldn't be about us. Over the last month and a half, certain individuals have attempted to make this about us, or more specifically about me, by asserting claims, challenging the manner in which I have performed my job of advising the Board of Education. I've been practicing law for about 30 years, including 24 years as a Marine Corps officer, five years as an assistant district attorney, and over 20 years representing school districts. I've represented Beacon in one capacity or another for approximately 18 of those years. I've worked extremely hard to establish my professional reputation, and I value it. And I've therefore chosen to respond to the two allegations that were made tonight. The first relates to a claim that a parent in the district sent a letter in the spring of last year that wasn't responded to appropriately, and therefore necessitated the filing of an OCR complaint. That's not, that's not true. The claim or the letter that was filed last year involved, in large part, a particular student. The allegations relating to that particular student, I did not believe, based upon my understanding of the facts, were actually accurate or factual. And we responded to those factual allegations. The OCR complaint that was filed, again, by the same individual who sent the letter, in that investigation, OCR did not investigate any claims involving any individual students. Rather, their investigation focused upon certain policies of the district and the manner in which the district provided training to its Title IX officials. We cooperated fully in that investigation. We reached an agreement with OCR that would result in an improvement in the way the district publicizes its Title IX policies. And we agreed to provide further training to not only the Title IX coordinators, but those individuals in the district who are involved in the processing of Title IX complaints.
Somebody dance.
The second allegation. You know what? I'll continue. I don't need a light for this. The second allegation involved a claim that I did not properly respond or advise the board properly with respect to what's been characterized as irrefutable evidence of wrongdoing on the part of the prior superintendent and the prior BTA president. This claim, which most individuals in this room have read about in a petition that has been filed to the commissioner and published in its entirety on the, on the Poughkeepsie Journal, alleges that I conducted an investigation and that, as a result of that investigation, there was no sanction, fine, or any other punishment for the behavior that was identified in these emails. I did, in late last summer, conduct an investigation involving these allegations. I reviewed emails, I spoke with individuals, and as a result of that, I met with my client, the Board of Education. I'm not going to go into the advice that was provided, but the petition accurately states the fact that as a result of that, there was no disciplinary action taken against either the superintendent or the former BTA president. What has been lost in this process is that the former superintendent has had a contract. And the contract provided for a just cause provision in the event that there was a desire with the Board, part of the Board of Education to bring disciplinary charges against her. Similarly, tenured teachers are protected by 3028 of the education law, an elaborate set of protections that provides them, you know, significant protections against disciplinary actions. I did not believe, based upon the information that I reviewed, that there was a basis for bringing action against, or for recommending that the board bring action against either of these individuals. This position was informed by my 30 years of practice in law and my 20 some odd years of representing school districts. My job as a representative of the school district and a boards of education is not to advise them to initiate litigation against individuals that do not have a likelihood of success. So there may in fact be a feeling on the part of the public that the, that the board should have taken action earlier than ultimately what's happened. But I can tell you that in advising any client, our advice to them is given within the context of what are the rights to the individuals involved? What are the merits of the case? And what's the right thing to do? Our advice in this case was informed by those principles, and I continue to believe that the advice provided was in fact appropriate. That's all I have. My pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks. So may I have a motion to approve the nomination of the candidate for Boces?
Motion to approve the nomination of the candidate for Boces.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, the consent agenda, there is a correction. It's the motions to approve items 11.02 through 11.07. So may I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda items 11.02 through 11.07.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. May I have a motion for the addendum to the non-instructional agenda?
Motion to approve the addendum to the non-instructional agenda.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. May I have a motion to add an agenda item?
Motion to add an agenda item regarding a grievance decision.
Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. May I have a motion for the, motion to approve the grievance decision?
Motion to approve the grievance decision let be resolved that the Board of Education does hereby deny the February 10th, 2016 stage three agreements brought by the Beacon Association of Office Personnel for the reasons set forth in the stage two decision of interim superintendent Anne Marie Quateroni, and for the additional ground that the BAOB has failed to sustain their burden of demonstrating that any provision of the collectively negotiated agreement has been violated.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all for coming, and thank you for staying with us in the dark.